Is that a thumbs up or is that a, wait a minute?
Good evening. It's now 5:30 and I call this workshop of the Victoria City Council to order. Our workshops are informal and with that, we're going to dive right into our agenda. We have one item on our workshop agenda this evening, which is an update on the Arboretum Area Transportation Plan and various related transportation projects. Presenting us, starting us off this evening is our city engineer Kara Garin. Ms. Garin, welcome.
Evening Mayor and City Council. Tonight, I have all sorts of guests presenting with me tonight, so.
Awesome. Welcome to all of them.
Yeah, I'm gonna lead off by telling you who is all here tonight, so I'm gonna start on that end. We have Eric Johnson representing Carver County, who you have seen plenty of times before on the Arboretum Area Transportation Plan. Diane Langenbach from Mindot is here tonight. Lyndon Robgent from Carver County, who you know. And then Dan Lannis is the project manager for the Highway 5 project. I think you've been here at least once before. So, um, our main focus tonight is gonna be on the Highway 5 project. So, this is generally what we're gonna cover, but there are a few other updates we're gonna give. So, this is going to be a presentation from several of us. So, without further ado, actually Lyndon is gonna kick us off here.
Mr. Robgent, welcome.
All right, I'm not gonna take forty-five minutes or so.
Okay.
Less than two. So, thanks for having us. I know it's been a while since I've been here. But we've come a long way with your help, a long, long way. Not easy, but very satisfying, I think, when we're gonna, when we're finally done with our implementation of this project. So, this, if you remember when we started the study, when was that Eric?
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen. We had a vision for all transportation, you know, in and around the Arboretum. It just happened that the Arboretum was surrounded by these corridors. The main reason it's called the Arboretum Area Transportation Plan. But we knew we had some problems to solve in Victoria, Chaska and Chanhas for the long term. So, if you recall, we came up with this implementation plan that's shown on the screen. And, you know, you know, Mayor, how funding works. You get a little bit at a time and you, you come up with some money from the cities, the county, you get Mindot to help and you do a project. So, we looked at a realistic approach of how we could, we build these projects over the next twenty years. And green, yellow, orange, short, mid, long-term vision for that whole area. So, that was the plan. Then, when we started talking to you guys and the public, we realized Highway 5, that's a tough road to close down three, four, five, six times over the next twenty years. So, we heard pretty clearly that, boy, it'd be nice if we could do a larger vision, painful, but close it down strategically and not have to come back over and over again. Not only the inconvenience to the public, the businesses, but also the expense. Each time you transition in and out of a project, you're spending half a million to a million just to connect to an old road or whatever. So, we started applying for grants and today, as you know, we've, we've, we've come up with a much larger project that basically consolidates the green from the east, the yellow, the orange, half the green to the west, that orange up and down Rolling Acres Road, all into one mega project that we're here to talk about tonight. And with the help of you guys, our legislators, have been really helpful at the state level. Congressman Hem has been awesome. Klobuchar, Tina Smith, we've consolidated, oh, we've collected, how many grants so far?
Eleven.
Eleven. Eleven grants. And so, we've got to the point now where we have a fully funded project. And we've reduced not only the city's burden on the car share, which I know is, was very significant when we first started this, and we'll talk about that too. It also reduced the burden on the county. So, we're in a good spot and now we just wanna make sure we do it properly. You know, how we, how do we build this thing? We know the environmental process has been a challenge. We know people are concerned about the environment in this community. It's a beautiful place. I, I completely get it. We know that people are concerned about pet and bike safety. We've tried to accommodate that. Nothing's perfect, but I think we have a pretty good product, the best that we can do. And we think we can, hopefully, with some good communication, which is gonna be key, build it in a way that's not painless, but at least, at least, least painful as we possibly can do it. And that's gonna, it's definitely gonna be a challenge, but we'll do whatever we can to make that happen. So, with that, I think I'm done, Kara.
One more.
Oh, that one, yeah. So.
What are you looking at here?
Yeah, right spaghetti map. Part of that communication strategy is to figure out not only what's going on with the orange project on, on Highway 5, but everything in the community. And with your guys' help, we programmed a lot of projects, you know, Five and Eleven, West by the Dairy Queen, that roundabout, through the park reserve that's currently under construction. Lots of stuff. Eighty Second Street, which is a huge, which will be a huge help, I think. That would help out Highway 5 when that has to be closed in 2027. Dan will give a little more info on that. But you can see, there's a lot of investment that went into this and we appreciate everything you've done to help us with this and try to make it, make it happen. But not, not simple, but we have a, hopefully, a strategic approach on keeping the public informed from here all the next three, three years of construction. That'll be quite a challenge. I don't know if you go, any of you drive to the cities, but Two Twelve is down a one lane right now, so. It would've been nice if we could've built this road this year while that was happening, but we can't. But hopefully, it won't be that tough, but it's gonna be a challenge, so.
Yeah, the only thing I'll just add to that is just that in and around Victoria, there is construction happening everywhere after really years of not a lot of investment in the transportation network. And all the time that I've worked in really Carver County. So, it definitely is a challenge for folks. At the car show on Wednesday night, we heard from a lot of people who are having to find creative ways to get from one end of the community to another. So, it was handy to show this map to remind everyone that there is definitely a lot going on, that the county is working hard to coordinate.
And we'll figure out some creative ways electronically so people can be informed of what's happening, when. We've got a few ideas, but we'd welcome more from you guys. We have a great communication team, not only your folks, the county and the city of Chaska and Chan and our county communications people, we're all gonna work together, and Mindot, of course, to make this work.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I know there is a lot going on right now and it can be very frustrating for our residents. And, and as Lyndon mentioned, you can't underestimate how much work went into trying to get this project done in a fashion that was the least painful possible. And the fact that we were able to accumulate all the funding needed to get this big of a project done, while I know it's very painful, I feel like this is the better option, the lesser of the evils, if you will. So, there are lists that folks can sign up on to get these construction updates. And I'm sure Eric's gonna talk about that a little bit. If not, Eric, I encourage you to tell folks how they can get to those things because they come to your email. It's very timely stuff, tells you what's going on, what's open, what's closed. And then, and that'll be very helpful. So, we appreciate your patience as we work our way through this over the next three years. All right, Kara, back to you.
Now, I'm gonna turn it over to Dan to talk more specifically about the planned improvements for Five.
Hi, Dan, welcome.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I know you've seen some of this before, so just pace me as you come on here for information. So, I'm gonna kind of defer to the skim through information as we try and give you an update and talk a little bit about staging and what to expect. So, I'm gonna start with a video simulation. You might've seen this already. We played this at the open house. This is what the public is, is seeing for what the job is going to be in a couple of years. We do this for a couple of reasons. It's gonna be tough for the next few years of construction. It's pretty important to see it's gonna be a great outcome in a few years and just bear with us until we get there. But it, it also shows many of the selections that you've made, aesthetics and such. But I'll play through it and you can stop me if you'd like to take a look at any, any scene. So, we had a pretty good open house, but, uh, well, I think over a hundred people showed up and they, they all stopped by the video screen to see what the job was going to result in. So, this is your downtown Commercial Avenue Roundabout area. This one's pretty hard to visualize, so this was a scene we were anxious to, to show. So, complete transformation of the west portion of the city. And this is really design accurate, so it takes a bit of time for us to put these models together. What you're, you're seeing is, is pretty accurate geometry and where the curb lines are, what landscaping is, is generally gonna be out there. It's, it's not perfect, of course, but it's pretty close to our, our overall plans. So, this gives you a pretty, pretty solid depiction of what will be. And of course, the overpass. Now, we're gonna key in on Rolling Acres Bavaria, looking north. Again, a badly needed improvement right here. This is actual traffic volumes put on the intersection. So, they're, they're not just putting cars in, they're actually putting in cars from our traffic, traffic models based on some of the queue lengths that they, that they've modeled. So, you can see the significance of the double left turn lane. If that, that was not there, you'd have queues all the way up past the Apple House entrance. So, shows what we've actually projected for traffic needs, so. And the Madeline Creek Underpass. And of course, these Rolling Acres Roads, some of the selections that were made at the last meeting that we visited at. So, appreciated your feedback and, and guidance on, on coming up with a plan for Rolling Acres. We think it's gonna turn out wonderfully. It's gonna be a dramatic improvement to the area visually and meeting some of the goals that we heard from the residents about speed management and pedestrian mobility. So, we think that's gonna be a fantastic outcome. Minewash to Parkway, you've all heard a great deal about that and the new Arboretum entrance. So, this is generally what this is gonna look like. We've also had quite a bit of discussions about this location. But again, this is going to be one of the major milestones of this project. When we open, I'll talk a little bit about that, the staging plan. This is going to be a top milestone of 2027 is the day this signal gets turned on and that intersection is, is active. So, that's gonna be later in the fall of '27. And this is a view looking from the Arboretum. And there's specific requests from the Arboretum side was plain concrete, no investment in aesthetics, where that was not necessarily the case from the north. So, this is a rare circumstance where we actually had different aesthetics on the north side versus the south side of the bridge, and that is why. And Forty-One, plenty of discussion on what the right solution was there. What ultimately was decided upon, of course, is a lot more lanes and a lot more turn, turn lane expansion here. So, this is going to be the long-term solution at Five and Forty-One. And it operates quite well. So, should be, should be a very key improvement and one that we'll actually reference in the staging plan as significant to getting completed in '26. So, there's, there's a bit of methodology in our staging plan as to going after that intersection first. So, we actually had the capacity at that intersection during, during the Highway 5 closure. So, any questions on what you saw or you'd like me to go back to anything?
Council, questions?
I, I'm just curious, the, um, the house that was recently built, like across from the Arboretum, how did that affect, I, I, um, that's right, I'm in a wash. So, like, did that affect much of our planning on where, how this road would be? And I guess, like, from a safety standpoint, like, are they, do they, will they only have a right in, out, or right in and out to that?
Right in and right out. So, it was certainly a, a point of significant coordination because obviously, there's a lot of discussion about whether or not that access should go away, whether or not that, uh, location should be acquired. That being said, it, it, it ended up being an acceptable outcome to maintain a right in, right out at that location with a property owner that wasn't really looking to sell. And so, was it a consideration? Absolutely. But it was also, I felt that the right in, right out would be the safety improvement necessary to keep that driveway in a functioning state for the near future. I mean, it's, he, he went into the build knowing full well that he was gonna be having to take a right and looping around in any number of different ways to get to the east. So, that was very transparent and he was fully aware that he was not gonna be able to take a left in out the highway. So, the right in was dramatically different than having any type of a, uh, access that contained a left.
Thank you.
In or left out.
Dan, do you have a picture of Highway 5 as it comes through, like, right straight out here? There is room for four lanes coming through Victoria. And I don't know if we've seen that all the way back to, like, kind of County Road 11.
Yeah, so this current project stops essentially at the fire station entrance. So, when, if we have time left, we'll be talking about the part through downtown that's left that we are now pursuing funding for. But during the Arboretum Area Transportation Plan, the study did identify that we do have adequate room within downtown to accommodate the four lane. The difference within downtown is we're operating at lower speeds. So, Mindot standards through downtown are different than when you're traveling at fifty-five miles an hour. So, the lane widths are narrower. And we aren't, we're accommodating turn lanes within the existing lanes that are there. So, that was studied and we could fit it without having to acquire any businesses or homes or.
That's what I remember to be the, to be the situation, but it's hard to imagine it, I guess.
Yeah. In the study, we do have some renderings of that, so if it's useful, I could locate those and send those around.
Sure, that'd be great. Thanks. All right, Council, other questions, comments on this? All right, seeing none, then we'll move on.
All right, well, another big topic on this project was noise. So, you, as you may have been informed and aware, there's, there was a noise study, substantial one, was required and, and was definitely desired by the residents in the area. There's a lot of, a lot of comments on, on noise on highway expansion, what's it gonna do to our noise levels. So, a substantial amount of study was done on, on noise modeling before and after conditions. It came down to only one wall met all the criteria necessary to bring it through to a vote to the benefiting properties. So, many walls were considered, many walls were studied in terms of cost benefit and whether or not it, it met the criteria necessary to invest in a wall. This was the only location that, it's by the Madeline Creek Underpass. Townhomes nearest the highway that justified that final, final review by the property owners. So, there was a voting process, part of the public hearing that occurred recently in June, and it was voted in. So, at this point, it could've gone either way. We have had them voted down as well. But in this case, it looks to be in support, supporting the, the wall. And so, would be included in the project. And we've got a few questions as to why this one versus other locations, why not across the street? Why not in front of our house? But the bottom line is, is we follow standardized formulas, criteria and cost benefit ratios so that we're, you know, we're not arbitrary. And that's what we've had to explain to every resident. So, if there's any questions about that, that's, that's the best answer we can offer is that this is all about formulaic determination so that it's not preferential to any one location. And this is the, this is the location that met their criteria. So, is there any questions on noise?
My understanding is that the, the wall or the barrier is, like, that's pretty predetermined too. Like, is it Mindot that makes that determination on what that exactly is? Like, we don't really have any say for aesthetics and stuff like that.
Yeah, because, because it's in a Mindot right of way, they do have the standards. They've updated them more recently to concrete as their, as their guideline. I, I think there, there could be some impact as, as far as color, things to that nature. I would say generally speaking, their policies are concrete. And if it's aesthetic cost over and above, then it, then it's the local cost and so is the maintenance. And so, that's what comes along with making it look, maybe we could put stone on these things, but there'd be a cost and then there'd be the maintenance of, of any type of element like that. So, yeah, at this point, it's concrete. Any other questions? Diane, is that reasonably accurate?
Yeah, that is correct. Concrete is our standard now. And then, just for maintenance.
Diane, can I ask you to come up to the podium so we can hear you? We can't hear you from back there. Or the people at home can't hear you. Just state your name for that.
Good evening, Council members. I am Diane Langenbach and I am the Mindot South Area Engineer for Carver and Scott Counties. And yes, I was just going to confirm that concrete is the standard for the wall and is for maintenance. Mindot Maintenance would maintain the highway side and then the city would be responsible for the local side of that wall.
Thank you. Any other questions on that? Moving on.
All right. And recap on the project schedule. This is a high-level review of really the final design delivery. Of course, the study goes back many more years, but this is the preliminary design through final delivery. It looks fairly simple, but it was quite a, quite a challenge to get it, to get it to this point. And it was, I thought for a while that we might be into '26, depending on permitting and, and agency approval timelines. And we've been fighting that the entire time. But on a project this size, just to give you a magnitude on the significance of that, one year is easily, easily in the $2 million-plus range in terms of taxpayer dollars. So, it's, it's tremendously significant to keep these projects moving and getting them to the bid as, as soon as possible and practical. And so, a tremendous amount of energy went into getting this project lined up for bidding this fall. And at this point, I think we're, we're on, on track to do that. Well over, well over a hundred people were involved in, in this effort here. And probably a couple hundred by the time we get into every agency member that's touched the job. So, it's, it's really a collection of many jobs piled together in one massive permitting effort. The brunt of the work is gonna be obviously '26 and '27, as you've heard. So, what this really indicates is we, we, we got this down to two major construction seasons. This was, by all typical standards, a three-year project, depending on how, how this got sequenced. But one of the goals of the agencies and all the stakeholders that we visited with was quicker is the least painless way to, to get this done as opposed to lots of incremental stages that, that dragged out over a period of three, three years. So, all efforts was, 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 was made on trying to get this down to two years with, with the single closure to Highway 5, a single season closure. So, that is what is represented here is a Highway 5 closure over the '27 season. And '26 is really in preparation for that moment, so. So, the regional alternative routes are gonna take a tremendous amount of traffic. So, when I talk about the staging plan for this job, it should be noted that really the staging plan for this has been going on before this project even started. The staging plan goes back to Eighty Second Street, the decision to, to build, to build that this year, the decision to prepare some of these other projects in anticipation for all the diverted traffic. The staging was really thought of as, as a region and how, how projects lined up in sequence, which is what the, that, that figure at the very beginning was intended to depict. A lot, a lot of work is being prepped for the, the Highway 5 closure. So, talking about staging on this project is probably a little short-sighted versus the complexity of, of putting this all together so that when Five was closed, it was, it was gonna, gonna work without some colliding other project that was going to route people even further out of the way. So, Phase One in 2026 is geared towards your north-south movements. That's what we're doing this first season. It's, it's, it's getting Five as prepared as possible to close it down. So, we're doing everything off to the side of the, of the highway. Anything outside of boulevards on out that would prep work, if there's walls. Any work we can do along the Five Corridor, we will do if it doesn't shut the highway down. But the majority of the work is really gonna be focused on this Highway Five and Forty-One intersection and Bavaria and Rolling Acres Road route. What we want is, is for that north-south movement to flow as efficiently as possible when traffic is routing around with the Five closure. So, to do that, it was essential for us to, to get Five and Forty-One operating functionally well. And so, that's, that's why this one is, is a, is really a prep, prep work to have the Five closure. So, what we're doing is Five is under, uh, being constructed under traffic in this area, so it's gonna be half at a time. It will be significant slowdowns in '26 and, and some queuing because we are building that half at a time under traffic. So, that intersection is not going to be working the way it is today. There will be some delays. That's why it's highlighted in orange, but traffic is still active and on it. To the north, the red section, that's under closure. So, we're closing the north leg of Forty-One while we're keeping Rolling Acres Road open so that there's a, an alternative north-south route while Forty-One is closed. Same with Bavaria. That's being closed while we maintain Forty-One to the south open so that there's always a, an alternate means nearby to, to go north or south during this phase.
Next phase is the opposite. Go ahead. Dan, one quick question on that. So, Bavaria is closed just from Eighteen over to Five, right? Yeah, okay, got it.
That's where the trail's going in along Bavaria.
Yep.
The road will get resurfaced and then they've gotta add additional lane work south of Five.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
So, flipping that over, same methodology. Five is being constructed half at a time, keeping traffic on it. But there'll be certainly delays and backups at that location while it's being done. Then we flip over, have the north, north side of Highway Five, Forty-One open while Rolling Acres Road is closed. So, that, that's a very impactful stage. There's, there's going to be a lot of local access-only management of traffic through a very narrow corridor. So, we're gonna be working hard to, to work with the residents on getting in and out of their various access points through a construction zone. But it would be closed to all through traffic. And then, of course, Forty-One to the south is, is being constructed in this phase the same time as Rolling Acres. And then, we have a closure to the regional trail for a period of time while that underpass is being constructed as well. All of this is to prepare, oh, I'll, I'll hit this one before I get into the next phase. So, Steiger, Steiger Lake Road, which is, which is another big topic here in '26. We, we determine that we are gonna need a significant amount of time to surcharge that north embankment of Highway 5 through this area. The purpose of this is, is to consolidate the soils underneath it in, in preparation for the final, final widening. So, with the surcharge, you're basically loading up the soil and the materials and you're letting it settle. It's just a programmed settlement period. It takes a significant amount of time to do it. And so, what we're needing to do in this scenario is to load that up and let, let that dirt sit for an extended period of time. So, the, the effort here, again, with this, with all of this being towards, let's get this in two years, is this would start in 2026, it would sit. is this would start in 2026, it would sit over, over the year, and then in '27, it would be, it would be finished up. So that is something that might be a newer topic here if it hasn't been discussed thoroughly. So I'll, I'll pause for any questions as to what the thinking is on this and what alternatives have been considered so.
That's in the same area where the road kept settling for years and years and years. So essentially, they have to do the same thing we did in 2012, adjacent to where it was, that road was done back in 2012.
And are, are they closing Steiger Lake Lane at that point? So how long Steiger Lake Lane will be closed for? An, a year? From where to where?
Just where it connects to Highway Five. Just where it connects to Highway Five.
Okay, so we, we had really been counting on that to be a, a great local alternate route, and that has now vanished. What's the alternative for that?
Will be coming back through downtown.
Through downtown on Five?
Like through to Plumwood and Victoria Drive.
Okay, okay. Okay. Council, other questions about that? New exciting closure?
Yeah, all kinds of exciting news.
Yeah.
Apologies to lay this out here in a quick update. Maybe this, this warrants its own separate discussion as to how this would, would play out as far as kind of the local movements during this '26 season. So we certainly would be happy to follow up with some information that would give you a little clearer picture about how this would work. But it, it all ties back to some design realities that none of us are super excited about dealing with, which is unpredictable soils that really need a significant amount of time to stabilize before we're building the permanent road on it.
I know that's been a, that area's been a problem for decades.
Yeah, and we're, we're obviously very concerned that it not be a, not a problem after this project is done. And so that's, that's the rationale here for some of these settlement recommendations from the geotechnical engineers.
Council, other questions, comments on that?
I guess my only question would be how confident are you in this preloading will actually work?
Well, we have to be as confident as, as, as we can be about any one of our solutions, short of, short of any 100% call on, you know, on any, any outcome here. I mean, we, we all, all have looked at all the different types of options. To answer your question bluntly, you know, high 90% percentile chance that this is going to do what we are expecting it to do.
Excellent.
What happens is during the monitoring period, we see things are going better than expected. We're actually monitoring how it's moving. I mean, it, it can, it can actually shorten if, if it settles and stabilizes in a certain amount of time. That being said, if something starts moving in a way we don't like, it is possible we'll make a judgment call and say, all right, we're going to want to do something different. But most of the time, high, like I said, high 90s, this is going to be a solution that's very predictable and programmed.
Thank you.
Okay, so final, final chunk of the '26 season is constructing the roundabout at the church. Roundabout is, is a tough one to build under traffic, and, and we need traffic on that at all times to get traffic in and out of the nearby neighborhood. So that is the last thing that happens in 2026, is constructing the roundabout. And the big season is early in 2027, Highway Five closed. This, uh, this will be well-publicized. People are going to start choosing their routes otherwise. A rule of thumb that a lot of folks have, have come to go by, that have seen these, these large projects play out where there's major road closures is, is, uh, they say about a third, a third, third, and third, where the traffic will displace. About a third will find some local, local routes, and then a third is, is gonna, is gonna completely avoid the area. And so we'll have to see what those final percentages are as to how many folks are going to come right down here to, to 82nd Street. How many are going to choose to take Highway Seven as opposed to Highway Five? And how many might just make, make trip decisions that include, you know, not going down this way at all. Staying, staying at home and working, and any number of things can happen. So, uh, but at, at the end of the day here, it, it is going to be very well-publicized about how to get to every single business during this closure period. We're, we're working very hard to make sure that folks that have good information and good materials to, to keep their operations running. Their customers know how to get to and from an area through the best possible route. And we hope to avoid as much confusion and frustration as possible during this phase. So, um, but what, what we're doing is focusing on getting the west half into the downtown Victoria done first. So what we're gonna, we're gonna be trying to do is get that leg from 13 into the downtown completed earlier in the season. So this would not be all of 2027, this western portion of the closure. As soon as that's done, which is closer to summer is what we think this can be completed at, we can open up that segment all the way up to 13. So then at that point, traffic's going to be coming all the way through downtown up to 13. We are gonna, expecting that closure across Lake Minwatah to be until fall of, uh, of, of '27 because of the work that has to be done across the, I won't say the Causeway by the lake where we're widening in those, in those tough muck areas. That's going to be a long construction process. And we're thinking September is going to be about the soonest where we'll be able to get even half of that back open. The big date is going to be, um, it's going to be October 1st. We're trying to turn on the signal at, at the new Arboretum access, Minwatah Parkway. We'll go from a temporary signal to permanent, and that would be the official opening day to that intersection. We might be still having westbound closed or, or eastbound closed at that phase. We'll allow, we'll allow westbound to come up to the signal on October 1st, but we may still have an eastbound closure after October 1st until they're finished with their work over the lake. So that, that would be the sequencing to '27. It's listed as one big closure. But again, west half, we're trying to get that down early so the downtown Victoria area is finished up. Eastern half, east of Rolling Acres, October 1st is going to be the big day where it's, it's going to be, it's going to look like an open highway possibly to everybody but the eastbound.
But just to, just to clarify, because I've heard some questions from the residents, '27 starts Highway Five closure, right? Western, eastern, call it two different phases, but through '27, it's just closing. It's not going to spill in at this point into '28.
According to every deadline we're going to have in the schedule, it is not going to spill into '28. There will be work in '28.
Sure.
That's going to be the finish-up work, boulevard work.
It'll be o, it'll be open.
It's gonna, it's gonna be, we call it substantially complete. So there, there's, there's always a trail overwork in the following season, but we're going to have all the highways open, all the roadways open. You know, we, we, as you said, what, what type of confidence level do I have on, on some of these things? High 90s that they're going to be able to hit their schedule. There's a lot of, a lot of incentives and a lot of damage, damages that are out there for these contractors to bid these jobs and miss schedule. That being said, uh, we have tremendous rains all year that, you know, the delays start to build up. So we can never say.
Yep, no, understood.
Until it's all.
Yep, appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm confident it will be done in two years. Any questions on staging at this point?
I don't see any. All right, carry on.
All right, well, uh, we are to that topic, considering some incentives to try and make sure the contractor, you know, has, has reason to finish early if they can. So we're going to be considering some incentives for, for this bid. And, uh, of course, we've got a construction communications approach that is really geared towards your business community to make sure that there's plenty of outreach, plenty of available resources that they can keep their customers confident that they have, um, means to get to and from the business without interruption, even, even despite all the construction happening in the area. Is there any other comments you'd like to make on communications?
Just that we are coordinating right now with Jen to get another, um, business meeting scheduled. The presentation will cover a lot of the same information, talk about that updated information with the Steiger Lake Lane closure, and talk through in more detail what that looks like and what that'll mean. I imagine will be a hot topic of that conversation with businesses, so.
So I'm going to be turning it over to Eric here and just leaving this topic. Eric might have a few additional comments on the communications as well. But, uh, just, just so you know, there's tremendous energy going into how do we, how do we prep the public for, for this? It's going to become very real once, once this project bids and, and we have our next open house, so.
We appreciate that. Mr. Johnson, welcome.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, on communications, we, as you know, we've been working at this for six years, working with the community in different ways, in different phases of the project. So we're working right now, the partners, the city, east of the county, the state, to figure out. We know, from what we've gathered to date, all the different groups and interests. We want to have a targeted approach that hits, hits everybody with good information. So we're working on that plan right now, and we'll make sure that's a plan that everybody supports before we go into that next phase. Also, you mentioned website and information. So yeah, folks can, I don't have it in the slide deck here, but if, uh, we do have a big mailing list of folks who get, uh, who get distributions from that. If you Google Carver County Highway Five Project, you'll find it, and you can sign up on that website. We have a lot of QR codes on our materials and things everywhere we go. People can sign up with a couple clicks. Just don't have that here tonight.
No problem. Easy to find it. And plus, our staff here in Victoria can direct you as well.
Lyndon hit on, on the funding package here in his intro and how much work and success we've all had. I was wrong before. I said 11. We've, we have 12 different sources of competitive funds and/or earmarks. With federal funds, we've leveraged eight different awards and state funds, four. So we're $100 million. We've got a $121 million project now come from outside sources. Early this year, we, we heard we were selected for the $25 million rural grant. And with the administration change and executive orders, some of that seemed to be in jeopardy for a number of months. But just a couple of weeks ago, we started working on our funding agreement. So it seems like we're on track to realize these rural funds. So that, the beauty of those funds are, they're, they're applicable to the whole project. A lot of these other funds were for Highway Five only. So that really helps out both the city and the county cost share on Rolling Acres Road. In addition, Lyndon and the county led a campaign in the last session here to get our state general funds, which were, for just a small portion of Highway Five, eligible for the whole project. So that too greatly helped on balancing the money we have and minimizing the local shares. I'm going to hit on that on the next slide. So we have 83% of funding from outside sources, those state and federal funds we've leveraged. And, and then the, the remaining 20, 21 million comes from the city, county, state, and U of M. So MINDOT is contributing 6.3 million plus major construction services for inspection here as we built that. So that also contributes millions of dollars in, in energy. The U of M is helping fund some of their, their ads to the project and their, their signal leg of Minwatah Parkway. That's at $870,000. And then the city and county. So the county, after we apply all the funding, the county is, is around $12 million. And the city estimate is 2.4 million. And that's come down quite a bit. A year ago, I think the city, well, Carrie, you can correct me. City was budgeting somewhere north of four times that amount, I think, of this project. And the county probably up to three to four times that amount. So we, we've had more success than maybe we anticipated a few years ago in, in the pursuit of funding. Yeah, any, any questions on funding?
This is incredible. Thanks to everybody who worked so hard on this. This is a giant project with lots of different funding sources and a lot of moving parts on that, so much appreciated on that. Taxpayers should be happy, happier.
Yeah, I'm just going to hop in in a little bit more detail on the city share. So originally, the city share for the project that's in front of you right now, if there was no outside funding that was able to be applied to the city, the city share would be 11.4 million. Over the last year, I've been up and down in terms of the numbers that have been presented to me. At one point, it was as high as nine. I believe Trish's last estimate had five to seven million in it in the city's long-term projection. I've been optimistic in this 2.5 million, but wasn't prepared to share it until really a week ago was the update then from Eric and Lyndon finally, that the 2.4 was able to be shared. We're still working through the details of what that 2.4 specifically includes in terms of how we're going to finance that. So I met with Trish early this week to talk through that. So as noted here on the slide, 1.5 of it is associated with Highway Five, and 910,000 of it is associated with, um, Rolling Acres Road. A portion of that has to do with the extension of a critical water main loop. That's a new water main loop between, um, really the Madeline Creek development and up, um, the overlooked neighborhood. So we, we don't have our water system looped really at all in the north part of the community. So we are very limited when we have certain things happen in that area in terms of, if we have an outage, we don't have a second way to backfeed up there. We've been waiting for quite a long time to have that loop in place. This gave us an opportunity to install it while the highway was under construction. We have to put a new water main under Highway Five and under Rolling Acres Road. So certainly doing it while the highway was closed presents us a much more cost-effective opportunity to do that. Other share of the city's project costs will be paid using our state aid funds. So that is gas tax money that the city receives annually that is sitting in an account, a count held at the state that we're allowed to spend for the city's share on, um, projects such as these. Some portion of these costs are for some of the enhancements that we added. We cannot use gas tax money for the enhancements that we've added on the project. So we're working through those details right now to refine that so that Trish can get it updated into the budget for '26 and '27. But it, it's quite remarkable. Those two things that Eric touched on with the rural funds and the change that was able to get made at the legislature were a huge piece of the puzzle of being able to get those funds allocated in a way that really was a big benefit for the city in terms of pulling funding in a way that will benefit not having to use general tax levy funds towards the project compared to what we were previously anticipating. We had been anticipating that we would have to issue street reconstruction bonds for a large share of the work on Rolling Acres Road, which would have had to be paid back. Your debt service levy would have had to be paid with general taxes to cover that over, you know, whatever period of time your finance director would have determined we would have had to finance that over. So it is a pretty major improvement in terms of the benefit of these changes. This next slide here, and in the spirit of time, I'm going to stay on the slide here. And because Dan went through the, um, uh, video, I did just want to highlight some of the local enhancements and benefits that are really specific to the city of Victoria beyond the obvious transportation improvements. I think I'd be remiss to not speak to the transportation improvements. In the 25 years I've worked here, it is the number one complaint that I get from folks is why does the city keep approving developments when there is no plan to address traffic on Highway 5? And for years, sorry Diane, I didn't have a good answer for that. I would just say, okay, there's nothing the city can do. We don't have control over transportation funding. We, I did not anticipate that we would be able to see a four-lane Highway 5 anytime soon, but the county took the lead on the sales tax and did not anticipate that they would be able to leverage all these outside funds, that we would actually see these improvements. So the transportation improvements are huge, but pedestrian overpass at Highway 5 and 78th Street, the underpass at Madeline Creek Park, the underpass on the Lake Minnetonka Regional Trail. I wanted to remind everyone that we are getting a sidewalk that we talked about at one of my updates along the west side of Rolling Acres Road to connect a few folks up to the roundabout at, by Mount Olivet. We're actually included in the project is replacement or mill and overlay of an older trail that we have along Rolling Acres Road. We're finally getting the trail along Bavaria between Highway 18 and Highway 5. The median and landscaping and irrigation for Rolling Acres Road, the landscaping and irrigation for all the roundabouts we've talked about, the aesthetic upgrades on the pet overpass, the new water main that we just talked about. And then there actually is a number of replacement and relocations of city sewer and water main that has to occur to accommodate the projects. Under normal circumstance, that can fall on the locals to pay for. So there's a lot of impacts to our existing sewer and water to accommodate these projects. And under a traditional project, we would be on the hook for paying for that. And with all the outside funding, that is helping pay for those projects versus us having to use city sewer and water funds to pay for those improvements. And then, of course, some additional landscaping in various areas. So just wanted to note those. Any questions about that before I move on?
Council questions, comments on those items? All right, moving ahead.
So just to note, at upcoming meetings, and we've covered this already, there needs to be a joint powers agreement between the city and the county related to the funding. There'll need to be a cooperative agreement between Mindot, Carver County, Chan, Hassan, and Victoria to address all the cooperation between all of the partners related to the project. There'll need to be a municipal consent waiver. So what that has to do with is if Mindot was just completing a project within the city limits that we weren't a partner to, we would need to consent to the project, but because we are a direct partner with the project, as we have been since 2019, we need to address that. So any questions on any of that before I just touch on downtown Victoria briefly, before you move on to your next regular meeting?
No, seeing none? Go ahead.
Okay. The one last thing we wanted to touch on was the fact that we've been talking about what happens, what's left with downtown. So we have the Purple Project that's under construction over on the west side of downtown with the Dairy Queen and the Highway 5 and 11 improvements. We have the project that we just covered in blue, and we've been getting a lot of questions about, okay, now what? Are we moving the bottleneck to downtown Victoria? And so we do have just a couple of slides that I am not going to go into technical detail about, but we are aware of how operations are going to change in terms of what the impact is going to be of dropping that, you know, we're taking our four lane, it's going to drop to two lanes as we move into downtown. So we are going to see some increased congestion within downtown. It is for that reason that the city council, as you all have been aware, we are immediately turning around and applying for funding to complete the section within downtown. So do I have a slide on that? Yes, I do. So we submitted an app, we requested congressionally-directed spending through Emmer's office and Klobuchar and Smith's office. Unfortunately, we were not successful with that endeavor for 26, but we'll continue pressing for future years. And these are some other endeavors underway, so we will continue on that pursuit as we continue to work on the downtown section. With that, I believe Commissioner, Commissioner Uterman may want to say a word or two.
Commissioner Uterman, welcome.
Hey, your gavel, let me go past two minutes.
Yes.
Just a couple of thoughts. Matt Uterman, County Commissioner representing Chaska and Victoria, if I haven't met you in the audience, if you need the slides, we can get those to you because I know that there's a pinch for time. But I think just to state the obvious, sometimes we forget who these tax dollars are for, and I know you guys don't because you get to field the calls, and Mayor Deb, you've said that already. But I think some of the things that maybe were missed that weren't, were inadvertent, but the option to do nothing is always an option. And I think the do-nothing option was always the thing that we leaned on because we didn't know if the state was going to do it. Wasn't on their plan for 25 years. And kudos to Lyndon and his relationships, and kudos to Bolton and Mankin, kudos to partnership with cities and the state to say, let's give this a shot. When I first got elected about five years ago, the first thing I did is I jumped in a truck with Lyndon and we zipped down 82nd Street behind the Arboretum. And I said, we got to get this thing open because it needs to be the relief valve for Highway 5. And so Lyndon shared with me that since then, this is the most complex project that he's ever worked on, and he's well-regarded as the top engineer within the state. And so for him to say that tells you really what we're, what we got going on here. And so the construction that's going on at 82nd Street behind the Arboretum is one of the puzzle pieces we didn't even mention today. And that's going to carry 6,000 to 10,000 cars to be able to get them where they need to go when construction is happening. Eric, you didn't say it, but, but you'll affirm this, I'm sure, because you had asked, somebody asked about the house that's north of 5. I remember being in a meeting where when, when projects run up to a high enough cost, you have to do reverse engineering to try and take some cost out of the project. And we put our heads together and said, why can't we move that bridge that was supposed to be 1,600 feet from in front of that house? Why can't we move that west a little bit ways? And just by moving it a couple hundred yards, it, it kept us from having to buy an access in and out and have, having to buy additional land that would have been six to eight, maybe $10 million of the cost. And sometimes that gets lost. Somebody can pull that door shut, that'd be great. And, and sometimes we forget that in getting these chunks together, Lyndon's team said, what if we did a lot fewer chunks, but we did it all at the same time? And, and what if we went and got funding to do that? And so literally, when the project started, it was going to take four years, and it was going to be about 27 different chunks. And now we're down to a handful of chunks in two years, and it's going to be a painful two years, there's no doubt about it. And then sometimes people forget about communications, and a lot of it's things that we've been inspired by the city of Victoria, the things you've done to say, the community wants to know what's going on, not just a response, but proactive. And so for the first time ever in Carver County, we have a communications department, chief communications officer, that we're learning by a ton of different projects, and we're going to bring that to the table. And so these are some of the things that sometimes we forget, and I like to come to the meetings that are maybe a little controversial, there's a lot of questions, others don't, but I do. We're all available. I mean, Chad does a great job of responding immediately, Mayor Deb's out in the community, we're all here, right? We answer these things. But if there's a hiccup that's coming on, I'm sure somebody else has done it, but the amount of data pings that's used to design what's in front of you today is mind-boggling. Like they can, they can ping your phone, and you don't even know it, but the amount of thousands of regressions to get to this solution that some may say is dumb, or they're inconvenient because it's a little bit too long, to find out the flow of traffic and the models, those things are done because it's your tax dollars. And so the net of this is, is it'll probably be about half the length it was supposed to be. It's going to get done when it might not have been able to get done because it wasn't even on the, the state's plan. And there will be hiccups, no doubt about it, but we're considering a lot of those things as we do so. And then the last thing is, is I think it's, it's fruitful to say this, we're all in nonpartisan roles, and of course, we have our political leanings. But this road wouldn't have been done without the support of Congressman Phillips, who's a Democrat, ran for president, without the support of Congressman Emmer. Like this is a bipartisan effort, and in a time when things are very divisive, this is a chance for us to elevate and say, my gosh, we brought everybody together, look at this. We've got the state, we've got the county, we've got the city, we've got residents, we've got both political parties present with a bipartisan support to get something done that is the most complex project in the most robust decade of the county's history. And so a thank you to everybody that's here and all the conversations that you've had and the phone calls you're going to receive. It's, it's a place for us to elevate something that's going great in a growth community, the fastest-growing county in the community, and, and the healthiest and the happiest because we're willing to take on some of these things. And so hopefully, we can use it as inspiration to do even more in the future. So that's my two minutes. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Uterman. All right, with that, any last comments from you, Kara, the engineering team that's here?
No, Mayor.
Can I ask one question before I know we're running up against the clock? I don't, did you have, I don't, maybe you had it on the slide and I just missed it or forgot. The section that you talked at the end about, right, the downtown area, do we have like a, like what that section itself will cost? Did you have that? And like, do we know like what the gap basically?
I, I think at this time, it's, let's estimate 15 to 20 million, but there's a lot of planning that needs to go into this.
Sure.
To tie it in and tie the local system in. So that's a whole process.
Sure. I was just curious, the general number.
Those are scary numbers. All right. All right, last comments, last call. All right. Seeing no further discussion, there are no further items on our workshop agenda this evening, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we stand adjourned. We will reconvene for our regular council meeting in just a minute.